Before we begin our licensing subcommittee meeting, if there is, I am joined here with Berta. She'll be assisting with anyone that needs translation. If you do need translation, please see Berta. And I'll have her.
Buenas tardes. Antes de comenzar la agenda para el comité de licencias, estamos aquí reunidos en presencia de la intérprete. Mi nombre es Berta Tavares. Y por favor, necesitan algún tipo de interpretación, traducción, se pueden dirigir a mí. Si necesitan traducción, por favor levante la mano.
Thank you.
Oh, are you going to fix that one?
Just there at this one.
What's happening?
That is to disrupt you.
Is that Poltergeist?
It gets so serious.
Poltergeist?
Which one are we supposed to be looking at? I got one here, one here, one here, and one there. Right, licensing committee for Tuesday, April 8th. Row call, please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Field.
Present.
Present Counselor Hogan. Absent Counselor Net.
Present.
Present Counselor Hollenson.
Present.
Present Counselor Mejimandre. Oh, I thought she was here, sorry. Absent. Okay.
We have taxi operators.
Okay, we have new taxi operators. Chanel Perez, 39 Prince Street in Salem.
Mr. Perez is here. What's the wish of the committee?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That license is granted and is ready now downstairs in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, we have Winston Romero Dominguez, 172 Washington Street. Winston?
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That license is granted and is ready now downstairs in the clerk's office.
Okay, we have Marino Ruiz at 445 Essex Street.
Gracias, Mr. Ruiz.
Marino?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is he here?
Yep. Standing.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That license is granted and is ready right now in the clerk's office. Gracias.
Then we have Silas Santos Juarez de Petro Ave in Salem.
He's here. What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That license is granted and is ready in the clerk's office. Gracias.
Okay, we have a new livery operator, Marco Sissiotti, 195 Borough Street in Swambscott.
Sissiotti's here. What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That license is granted and it's ready in the clerk's office. Thank you.
And we have one new secondhand article store at 125 Essex Street, Barry Daddies Dillon.
Can we invite him to explain to us?
Sure. Can you come to the podium, please? Can you state your name and explain the type of business?
Edinson Cespadiz. The type of business will be a secondhand retail and clothing, well, clothing and sneaker store.
Counselor Hollenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with him several times. And, you know, I love that building as a very historical background in Ward III. A lot of good organizations and businesses started in that building. I like the idea. I wish you well. And we'll see what will happen since this business is something new in that area.
Thank you.
So I wish to, I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That license is granted. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have renewals.
We'll take them as whole, except for flammables, please. We can do so, is that okay with the committee? We'll separate out flammables?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the wish of the committee for the renewals?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of those for junk?
No.
Dealer, food, truck, sign, license, renewals? None? Okay, what's the wish? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That license, those renewals are granted. And now if we can take the renewals for flammables, auto body, auto repair with flammable at the request of the Lynn Fire Department, make a motion that the following stipulations be included on all new flammable licenses and all renewals of flammable licenses with the following stipulations. No dismantling of cars. No working on car outside of building. No tires or car parts around the building. No working on cars on adjacent property. No leasing of bays. No open on Sundays. So these are all similar to all other approval, approved licenses that we've gone through excluding flammables. The fire department has now asked that we include that with flammable new licenses and flammable renewals. Any motion with that motion? Does anyone want to second that with those stipulations?
Second.
From the fire department? Second. Any further discussion with those stipulations or anything? Nope.
Nope.
None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Those flammables are renewed with those stipulations from the fire department. Any other business? Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have canning dates for Lynn Classical class of 2025, adults only, on April 19th, 2025, and NEFFL flag football, adults only, July 19th and August 30 and 31, 2025.
Can we separate those, please? First, on the vote for the Lynn Classical class of 2025, what's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will vote present on that one.
Present.
Please. And then NEFFL flag football. What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That license is granted. Both licenses are granted. Any other business?
No other business.
No other business? What's the wish of the committee?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
I am ready.
Thank you. It was fun, right? The kids were really engaged.
Oh, no one's here. Hong. Hong. Will you be a part of the Veterans today? Can you, can you be? Yes, day. Brian, what about you?
Oh, I'm on it.
Oh, you're on it?
I am.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I thought it was Fred Lapierre and Pete.
There's many committees that I'm not on. Thanks to Counselor.
Oh, Diana, you want to be? Yeah, come on, Diana.
Diana would love to be on Veterans.
I didn't even realize he was. Okay, we're going to call the Veterans Committee meeting to order. Our row call, please.
Counselor McLean?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan absent. Counselor Field?
Present.
Present Counselor Lapierre absent. Counselor Aminey absent. Counselor Net?
Present.
Present. Counselor Chakoudis?
Present.
Present.
All right. Well, these meetings are used to make sure that we are servicing our Veterans Committee to the best of our ability. So I have our VA Services Officer coming to the podium to give us an update on what's going on in that, in the veteran community, Michael Sweeney.
Thank you so much for having me. And thanks, thanks for doing this again, Counselor. It's important. Before we move forward, I think it's, I think it's a great idea and to thank you. General Bennett, Secretary Bennett will come up and mention it as well. Two weeks ago, we had an event down in North Shore Community College that focused on outreach for women veterans. And I think that was a great success. You were at the head of that, and so was General Bennett. And I want to thank you for doing that. I think that's some of the stuff we have to do to keep moving forward. The following week, just last week, we had a lot of people there for our Vietnam Veterans Day ceremony. We ended up with about 60 people in the foyer saying thank you to Vietnam veterans, 50 years after the end of the final troops left Vietnam. And we were able to honor Jerry Waldron, who was up there and for all of his work as an educator through the years teaching children about Veterans Day. Upcoming, and we're going to be putting it out soon. This will be on our social media tonight for Memorial Day. All of our events coming up for Memorial Day. One thing that's coming up in May that I think is important to mention, up at Pride of Lynn Cemetery, the Jewish War Veterans and Auxiliary of Massachusetts have sponsored, there's a, they're putting a memorial stone at the Pride of Lynn Cemetery on the 25th of May. So there'll be a busy weekend. We're going to put the flags, decorate the graves at Pine Grove Cemetery on May 22nd. And Memorial Day will be on May 26th. And now we're going to have a procession led by our Veterans Council, who I'm going to mention in a second. One thing that's coming up that I have to keep mentioning to everybody is Freedom Fish. I don't know if anyone, so Freedom Fish is sponsored by the EDIC. And last year, I know a lot of you were down there. I think it was almost like 150 people were down there fishing for free for a whole day. They get to take a cruise into Boston if they want to, if they can't fish. So please, facebook.com/freedomfishlynn, contact our office, EDIC. That's it. But it's a really, it's an important event. It's for veterans. I know you've been there as well, Counselor. And I think it's just something that we're every year. It's just an incredible thing. Brothers Deli comes out, sponsors all the food. Please sign up because space is limited. And finally, I want to congratulate and welcome our new Veterans Council President Charlie Griffin, who's with us back here with Sergeant Major Oswald, who's Secretary from the Lynn Veterans Council. And we're still in the, still pushing hard for the 2026 parade we're going to have here in Lynn in honor of the 25th anniversary of 9/11 and the 250th anniversary of the country. So I don't know if it would be okay if they could come up just say a few words to talk, to highlight that parade? Would that be?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, Charlie Griffin.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but elected me as the new president of the Lynn Veterans Council. And it's been an honor so far to service that. I just want to cover a few things. I really didn't prepare anything tonight. I got to get a last minute notification on this. One of the projects we're working on right now is for Mr. Fecto. I don't know if everybody's aware of him. He was a CIA operative. He was in almost Chinese prison for 20 years. And we're updating his memorial that we had for him on Flax Pond. It was pretty shabby since it was just a small stone, you know, recognized in his service and his unbelievable sacrifice. Now we're going to, like we do with Brad Campus' memorial, we're going to have a pretty, pretty nice memorial for him there with a nice granite stone, a couple of flags, an information amount display, which will explain the whole story. So when you go by there, it won't just be to look at a stone with this information on it. It will, it will have all the information on what he went through and when and where. And I think it's not only to honor him, but it's also educational for generations to come, that people understand, you know, his sacrifice and his service, which is, if you, if you know what he did, it was just, it's unbelievable. And he's still with us. He's 98 years old. It's actually going to come to the ceremony. And we're all looking forward to it. When we do have, it's going to be April 30th, this 30th, at 1:00 PM at Flax Pond, where Euclid Ave meets Maple. So everybody's invited. If you get the word out, the more people we have, I think, it'll be fantastic. Another project we're working on in the Veterans Council is the Brad Campus Scholarship Fund. We did a fantastic memorial for him last year. And we transitioned into a scholarship fund with the extra money we had. And we had got 10 applicants this year. We had, we have to select three winners. And we're going to, the kids are going to get $1,000 each. And we'll be doing that at the end of this month, picking the kids. And then I guess we'll be handing out the checks in early June. Again, to remember Brad's service and his sacrifice. That will continue for hopefully many years to come with the scholarship. And I think one of the best parts, I've read on the applicants is, we asked them what the American flag meant to them. And it was just unbelievable what these young people had to say. Every one of them, the essays were fantastic. And it just goes to show you that a lot of times we think maybe young people really don't care about things like that or don't understand or appreciate. And after reading these essays, it was just, it was overwhelming to, every one of them was overwhelming. It was very difficult to pick, pick the three top kids. And finally, the, Mike mentioned a little bit with the parade in 2026. I've never, I've never planned a parade before. And thank God we have Sergeant Major Oswald with us because he's got experience in doing it. We just need all hands on deck to help us out, whether it's to volunteer, make donations, you know, participate, be actually in the parade, or just any way you can help. We need the whole city to help, help us with this. Not just politicians or business, but every, every citizen that can help us any way they can would be greatly appreciated. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update. Thank you. All right. So we're going to bring Andrea Gell Bennett to the podium next. She is the Massachusetts Deputy Secretary of Executive Offices for Veteran Services.
Hey, everybody. So, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. I was surprised, pleasantly surprised and happy at the request to come here and talk about the initiatives that we're having at EOVS and how Lynn can support those initiatives. So with that, I will get started. Just as a review, since Governor Healey took office, Massachusetts has made good on its commitment to veterans. And, and she's done that in real, meaningful ways. As we all know, last August, she signed the HERO Act. And it, as everyone is saying, the most impactful bill for veterans. And it has helped veterans in approximately 30, 30 ways, increasing everything from financial benefits and mental health services to the higher tax credit and lots of other things. And in addition to the HERO Act, our office has been committed to our mission of honorably serving those who served us. So we are actually coming up on our one-year anniversary of the End Veteran Homelessness campaign. And we're also, we also invested $13 million in veteran housing developments, including units right here in Lynn. And so I'll talk about that more a little bit later. We created a new Veterans Employment and Education and Training Program and helping veterans find careers to bolster the workforce. And the HERO Act increased the, as I mentioned, the vet higher tax credit incentive so businesses can hire veterans. So what can Lynn do? So I think your timing for this request is, is actually pretty incredible. We're working, we are currently working on a broader municipal, municipal engagement initiative around veteran housing issues. It hasn't been launched yet, so this is an exclusive. And I do have permission to share it, but I'm sharing it here and you will be ahead of the game. And so basically, what it is, is for municipalities to sign a pledge to end veteran homelessness. And we're functioning in five specific areas. I don't know what the incentives are going to be for, for this sort of thing, but Massachusetts has always been a leader in veteran services. And I am confident that Lynn will take up that mantle as well to be a leader in the state. So what is the pledge? Basically, the first area is for private landlords, encouraging them to be, to join the HUDVASH program. There are a lot of veterans out there who need that extra support. And there are a lot of landlords who, who need the paying tenants. And so if they could be part of the HUDVASH program, that would be great. And if we could sign on to that, that would be a wonderful way to help and support veterans. Veteran preference in affordable housing is another area that we're looking at and we think is, is something that would make a difference towards ending veteran homelessness. The third thing is increasing the veteran property tax exemption by up to 100%. I don't really know where Lynn stands on that. I know that they are moving forward with it, but I'm not sure where they are exactly. And under the HERO Act, you can elect to do this, but it does require a policy that must be adopted by the, by the body. The fourth thing is to tie the disabled veterans' property tax exemption to inflation. And again, I don't know where Lynn stands at this point, but again, it's another issue that requires the legislative body to, to adopt it. And then the fifth thing is evaluating underutilized municipally, municipal-owned properties for veteran housing. So there may be properties out there, or there may be land out there that can be utilized for veteran housing. And if we could capture that, that would be another way to support veterans. And like I said, I don't know, we haven't figured out what the incentives are going to be yet. But I, but again, Lynn can just get ahead of it and be, be at the forefront for this. There are a couple other things that I, other ways that I think Lynn can certainly support. And it goes back to housing. And that's in expanding housing support. Fast-tracking housing approvals and expediting permitting. And I'm going to give you a personal story. I had some work done on my private, my home. So no landlord, no rental. But every time the contractor needed to have an inspection, it took a week to 10 days just to get them to come to the house to do the inspection for whatever, electrical plumbing, whatever. And so if those permitting issues can be expedited in some way when it's related to veteran housing, that would certainly support the cause. And establishing veteran housing assistance programs. Again, I don't know how much money you have in these days with all of the things that are going on. But that would be another way to help veterans who are in a, in a crisis situation. Another area is to maximize that property tax benefit for veterans. Another one is expand access to mental health. I know that they've done some of this in the past, but working with first responders, the Lynn Police and the Fire Department, to train first responders on how to interact with veterans in a crisis, that is something that would certainly support veterans because everyone has a crisis. But our needs are somewhat a little bit different and needs specialized training for, for those things. And if you could secure, again, money, funding for mental health initiatives, crisis intervention programs and outreach efforts, again, that would support veterans in, in a great way. And increase awareness of community events and engagement. And again, another personal note, I'm going to, I'm going to call it strengthening partnerships with local veteran service organizations. You just heard from the Lynn Veterans Council, DAV, VFW, American Legion. We all do things to support veterans in the community. And as I mentioned, as a personal note, the DAV had an event honoring Vietnam veterans. And Congressman Multon made an appearance. The Swambscott elected officials made an appearance, but no one from Lynn. but no one from Lynn participated in that event. And I was disappointed. So increased engagement. And that's an area of the HERO Act that they talk about, and that's honoring and recognizing. So if you can make that effort, that would be something that we really would appreciate. And I promise, Mike did not put me up to this, but strengthening the V S O and his position. And I, you know, I don't know what he needs, but I know that they're always behind the eight ball. And so any help that they can have, whether it is increased hiring, funding, whatever, whatever he needs. But just strengthen that for the V S Os. And the last one is really something that's near and dear to my heart. We all know about the 22 suicides that happen, 22 a day. If there's a way for Lynn to promote lethal means safety training to the veteran community, that would be incredibly helpful. You could collaborate with the Department of Public Health or whatever training is out there. Those are things that would help us. And so Lynn can build on the HERO Act. If there are parts of the HERO Act, if you're hearing from veterans saying that there are things in the HERO Act that they would like to see, please, you can submit resolutions to amend them. But it would certainly solidify any, solidify the commitment that you have by doing this. So I do have handouts, and I did just throw a lot at you. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions. But like I said, I do have some handouts so that you could see some of the initiatives that we have.
Thank you. Counselor Field has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. General Secretary. One question I have is, it seems like a daily occurrence now. News coming out of Washington, you just don't know what's true, what's not true. I know something that I heard recently was that there was no longer funding for the 988, is it, the crisis hotline for veterans? Whether that's accurate or not? I know it's something that, I know a number of local elected officials on the federal level had supported that. It's something that may or may not have been cut with the current administration. Can you clarify that for us and for veterans? And if it has been cut, what avenues are available for veterans during this type of crisis?
So I can't clarify cuts or not, but I can tell you that 988 is still up and running so that it is available for veterans if they're in crisis. In addition, our office is always available. If they've got access to a computer, Google Executive Office of Veteran Services, and it'll have a phone number. I wish I knew the number off the top of my head, but I don't, sorry. And there is, we have a whole engagement team. And that's their job to respond to any correspondence that comes in.
Thank you.
Could we bring Mike Sweeney back to the podium? Mike, I wanted to talk to you more about the tax incentive. I know that you were working on that with the Economic Department. How was that progress coming along for that, the exemption for veterans?
I believe they're still working on it. So the assessor, Chris Gates, worked with the financial team on that. But I believe the intent was to move forward on it. I haven't had any updates other than that. But it does not take effect until FY '26, I believe. So they have a little bit of time. So I think that was the rationale behind that. But not speaking about when they're going to do it, but I know that that was the intent, was to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll get with you offline to talk more about how we can move it forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any more questions for the Deputy Secretary? All right. Thank you so much. I need all those notes too, please. Thank you. And what is the wish of the committee?
What's your thought, Chair?
Second.
All right. We adjourn.
Call the Public Property and Parks Committee. Roll call, please.
Counselor Chakoudis?
Present.
Present, Counselor LaPierre?
Present.
Present. Counselor Net?
Present.
Present, Counselor Matul?
Present.
Present, Counselor Alonso?
Present.
Present.
First on the agenda.
Okay, we have a request from the D P W Commissioner, Andrew J. Hall, to dispose of surplus vehicles and equipment.
All right. Commissioner Hall, would you like to explain to the councilors?
Sure. Thank you for having me. So every couple of years, we have an auction to rid ourselves of vehicles that are no longer in service. Before you today is a list of approximately 50 pieces. There are D P W vehicles, police vehicles, fire vehicles, I S D vehicles that have been taken out of service. The first step in the process is for you as a committee to vote them as surplus to our needs, at which point I can auction them. We hire an online auctioneer out of New York. It's similar to eBay, a little smaller scale, but it's an online auction. Anyone can go and bid on this equipment. And we take the highest bid and make some room. Does anyone have any questions?
Counselor Alonso.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Andy, good afternoon. So 47 vehicles to be auctioned. And we're doing this every two years. So it's, as you said, it's an online auction. Is there a way for the public to see this actual list? And where are, what can the public participate, I'm sure? What is the link?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Thank you for asking it. So we advertise in the daily item. And I imagine we can advertise, I'll let the mayor's office know when the auction is about to take place. You know, it's a web address, and you can go on there and see all the items that we have for sale. The more people that know about it, the better off we'll be.
Anybody have any other questions?
I do have a follow-up question. But Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry. Andy, the model year, I reviewed the list, and I'm shocked with some of the items here. It ranges from year 1991, and we're auctioning of an item with the year of 2023. So that's basically two years. Why are we auctioning something that we just purchased two years ago?
Let me take a look. Hang on. So the item that you're referring to, 2023, is a radar trailer that was purchased. And it was shortly thereafter hit by a car and totaled. So we got an insurance claim from it. And we got an insurance claim to replace the unit. And then we'll, I'm left with the hulk of what was hit by the car, so.
So how do we decide that this vehicle needs to be auctioned?
It was totaled through the insurance, through our vehicular insurance.
Yes. Because, you know, I'm really concerned about this. I had a meeting with some of our staff last week, together with other councilors. And their concern really is that we're lacking of spare parts at D P W. They want to do something there, but we don't have spare parts. And now here we are, auctioning vehicles. And then eventually, we're buying vehicles to replace these vehicles. Is there something, way where we could save money as a city, but at the same time, be practical with all the vehicles that we purchase?
Oh, yeah. And we do just that. Like this doesn't, this list isn't inclusive of all the vehicles that we have that is out of service down in our yard. But if I keep every single vehicle, it'll overwhelm us, and we won't have any space.
So how do we address the issue of spare parts problems, which is a problem in the city year after year?
Spare parts from out-of-service vehicles?
Vehicles in the lot at D P W.
I think what he's saying, how do you know what vehicles to get rid of? Basically, if I'm correct, the mechanics kind of go through the vehicles you're auctioning off to make sure that they can't fix them or they can't use the parts? Is that what it is?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah. Spare parts, like you're referring to the purchase of new spare parts, correct?
Correct.
I would not say that we have a problem in that regard right now.
The chief of police was here a year ago and explaining about purchasing more vehicles to Lynn Police. And I asked a question about old vehicles. And he said, we use that. Some of it will be auctioned, some of it will be used for spare parts. Are we using some of this 47 spare parts, 47 vehicles?
No, no. These 47 hopefully are moving down the road. And there are others that aren't on this list that are not also in service that we use for spare parts, the boneyard, if you will.
Thank you. I have one more question, Madam Chair. So the money that goes from auction will go to general funds or to D P W funds? Explain it to us.
Goes to the general fund.
And okay. And we will get updates about that after, like how much we raise after the auction and all?
Sure. I can report to the committee if you'd like.
Thank you. That would be very, very helpful. I have no more questions, Madam Chair.
No problem. Counselor Matul?
Counselor Alonso, he asked my question already, so.
Does anybody have any other questions? All right. So Andy, just last know when the auction is, and then we'll have you come back and explain what you made.
Sure, sure. One more thing to add, actually. So as soon as we finalize the list, as Terry can attest, as soon as we finalize the list, we get more vehicles. Oh, I heard your auctioning stuff. Let's put this on the list. So I'd like to come back to you folks in two weeks, if possible, with another shorter list just so that we can get all this material moved on.
That would be fine. That would be great.
Okay. I'll reach out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda.
We have a request from the mayor's office to use the foyer on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, between 4:30 and 7:00 p.m. for the Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month Event.
All right. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I do have to go back and do a vote, though, for the surplus. All right. So do we have a request that it's all right for Andy to do this? Someone might make a motion?
Motion to approve the, motion to approve the leading to the auction, 47 vehicles.
Second.
Second. All right. Roll call.
Counselor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor LaPierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Alonso?
Yes.
All right. Any new business, old business?
No new business.
All right. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ways and Means Committee meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Madam Clark, I asked the meeting to call for the order. Please roll call.
Counselor Net?
Present.
Present, Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present, Counselor Chakoudis?
Present.
Present, Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counselor Field?
Present.
Could you please read orders?
There we have one order. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift from John M. Walsh, Jr. in the amount of approximately $1,800 for the purpose of purchasing dirt to make improvements to the baseball softball diamonds at the Babe Ruth Field Bowser Complex. Further order that the comptroller is hereby authorized to take any and all necessary action to effectuate the purpose of this gift.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present, Counselor Field?
Yes.
And any other business?
No other business.
Okay. Any comment, Mr. Comptroller?
Is there an emergency?
No emergency, honest. I want to thank you so much, the Walsh family, for their generosity. They have done a lot for our city, and we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, it stops raining.
So what's the wish, committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Like to call the Tuesday, April 8th, City Council to order. Roll call.
Counselor Allenson?
Present.
Present. Counselor Chakutis?
Present.
Present. Counselor Field?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counselor Mathieu?
Present.
Present. Counselor McLean?
Present.
Present. Counselor Meany?
Absent.
Counselor Mejimandre?
Present.
Present. Counselor Net?
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Just like to say that Counselor Meany is on a vacation, scheduled vacation. Can we all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Special prayer, Mr. President, for the families, the Lacy family and the Gorman family. Also for the family of Lynn firefighter David Di Prezito.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Accept the minutes from March 25th.
Motion accept.
Your motion is accepted. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's accepted. Communications.
We have a communication from his honor, the mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Michael Smith to the position of Emergency Management Director for the city of Lynn effective immediately. Sincerely, Mayor Jared C. Nicholson.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearings.
We have a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Lynn City Charter.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, come on up to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Walsh and councilors, for this opportunity to comment. I'm speaking in favor of the proposals of the Charter Review Committee. And first, I just want to thank the Charter Review Committee for the terrific work that they've done over the course of the last year. We really appreciate all the effort and thought that has gone into these proposals. I'd like to thank the council specifically for the appointments that you made, and particularly Counselor McLean, who, as you know, served on the committee. I'd also like to thank everyone that submitted public comments over the course of the process, particularly during the public comment period this winter, and those that spoke at the hearing. And also, all those comments were incorporated into the final recommendation, which was adopted unanimously by the Charter Review Committee. I think I've spoken, had the opportunity to speak with each of you, and I know the Collins Center was here at the last meeting to give the presentation, and they're here tonight as well, if anyone has questions. But I do believe that this recommendation from the Charter Review Committee would make good government, common sense, reforms to the way the city is governed. And I think we've seen in the past the charter being too prescriptive, which may fit the needs of the city at any given moment. But I think as we've seen, as we've worked with some of these issues, it can handcuff us when we're trying to reform things, and requires us to go to the state under the current system, which becomes a burdensome process through the home rule process. And so this would be a major step forward. I think there's still work to do, as many of you know, following on the charter. We'll be working on the administrative code and codifying our ordinance, which will not only help us get to best practices in city government, but also improve transparency and accessibility and the kind of access that we want to offer our residents into how the city is run. And those would get us into the next level of detail, and would very much appreciate the council's support of these recommendations. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Come on up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, nice to see you all here tonight. And I want to start by thanking both the council and the members of the committee for both helping putting together the committee with your support, and five members were appointed by the council, forth by the mayor. I want to thank you for your interest in taking a serious look at the charter, which was established, fully established in 1978. But I also want to get a chance to thank the members of the committee who came together and we met 10 times in 2024, and had went through the whole document, spent a lot of time both in our meetings as well as getting a chance to read the document separately, and had really steep and really engaging discussions on the charter at large and making recommendations on changes we believe will really improve the document and make it much more accessible and easily understood by the public at large. So I also want to thank the Collins Center, who has substantial experience throughout the Commonwealth, working with communities who are looking to update, modernize their charters. They were a great resource. They helped us in terms of coming up with other communities and the kind of work that those communities did, answering our questions and really helping facilitate the broad discussion that really we engaged in to come up with the document that's before the council today. Again, the committee's goal was to modernize and streamline and make this document something that the public could understand more fully. And the other piece of it is to ensure that the source of the documents for the operation of the city is all in one place and easily understood. Some of the changes that are recommended, and I won't go into all of them, but I think it's important to lay out some of what the changes and recommendations are, is to establish a formal capital planning process, which is coherent and transparent that ensures that streets, sidewalks, playgrounds, and buildings are improved and maintained. And more, just as importantly, all with a meaningful role for the council to both debate and prioritize those projects as you see them across the community and the work you do every day. I think it's a real opportunity to have a real robust discussion, involvement with the council, and come up with a five-year plan that really reflects the needs of the community based on that kind of involvement, input, and discussion. The charter connected, what this charter does is connects to the foundational document that was originally anticipated in terms of the charter for the city of Lynn. And to what's important, I think the mayor mentioned this, but to return to the authority to the city that was changed in 1985 under the bailout bill for the city of Lynn, which basically indicated that any changes, organizational changes or otherwise, had to go through the home rule petition process, which is really burdensome and in many ways is excessive state government oversight of the city. At the time, understanding it was appropriate, but it's time to go back to what was pre-1985, but more importantly, what all other communities in the Commonwealth deal with, and that's being able to reorganize and develop the city government in the way the city wants to do it without having to go through the home rule process, which I think is a big step forward. The other opportunity is for better financial management, and I know we talked about it at the meeting two weeks ago, and I think Counselor Lapierre had asked a question, if I'm remembering directly. But it was to establish the opportunity to have a meeting of the mayor, the school committee, and the council before the budget process even begins, to get a chance to come together with the CFO and others in the community to really get a feel for what the budget looks like prior to the actual process beginning. I think that that really gives the council and the elect, and the mayor as well, and the school committee, an opportunity to really have a robust discussion on where the city's at at that point, get a chance to really start preparing for what the budget process was. And I think Counselor Lapierre, you indicated how that, and other members of the council indicated how important that is to the council in terms of the current process. I really believe, and I think the committee believes, this is an opportunity to have that discussion and then help shape that budget process moving forward. So I think that's a really positive piece as well. Another piece of what I think is a good piece of this, and there were some questions related to it, is taking a different direction from what is now the current tenured positions on the department heads and replacing that. I think it's important to understand what are we replacing it with by best practices, human resource best practices, progression, progressive discipline, which is a protection across the board. I think that's an important piece that I don't know what we discussed last two weeks ago, but it's creating human resource best practices, creates a progressive discipline process, and it really helps professionalize, continue to professionalize the city government as the work that you are doing and the mayor's doing directly related to that moving forward. Again, I just want to thank the council and the committee for all the work they did. I think it's a really good piece of work, a good document, and I would ask the council that you follow the recommendations on the committee, vote to accept the Charter Review Report as we have submitted it to you. I think it's a really great step forward, and I think it's an opportunity for the council to make a good statement on some of the good things that are in this document and ask for your support. Again, thanks for listening. I've been really, it's been a great opportunity to spend about a year going through this, but it's important work, and we had eight other great members of the committee that really worked hard to present a document that we really feel strongly is a good move forward for the city of Lynn. Thank you, Mr. President, and to all the council members. Thanks for your attention to this, and I know that you've looked serious at this, and I look forward to your continued support. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Come on up to the podium.
Joseph E. Scanlon III, 236 Parkland Avenue, former counselor of Ward 1, former counselor at large, member of the Charter Review Committee, and person probably responsible for pushing through the 1985 legislation that took the power away from the city of Lynn to actually govern itself. So I'm happy to stand here and say, I lived long enough to see it go away. I hope it does go away. And having served as a city counselor for a number of years, 12 years, I served under the, my first two years were under the old charter, and after that was under the existing charter. I always found the existing charter to be actually more cumbersome than the older charter. And as time went on, and after 1985, we lost a lot of our own discretion. I think what these changes will do will enable the council to increase its role and oversight of the departments if it chooses to exercise the powers in the administrative codes that have to be implemented. I think, I always felt my first two years here, I was more involved and had more of a say and went on in the city government than after the adoption of this charter. There were some good things in the existing charter, such as public hearings for ordinances, the fact ordinances can't be adopted on the night they were introduced, which they could have been then, prior to. But I think what we've done with this charter review is incorporate the best policies of both the old charter and the new charter, and new and existing thought within government. And I think it's a step forward for the city of Lynn. I've been around a long time, and again, I've found the existing charter to be very cumbersome, and in a way, it has distanced the council from the operations of the city. And I think with oversight of department heads, that the excellent provision in there is the joint meeting of the school committee and the council and the mayor, so that everyone knows where they are financially at the beginning of the year, and the fact that if all the changes and codes go through as anticipated, the council have greater oversight and the employees and department heads who work here, and eventually have more, the city will be able to reorganize itself in a better, more periodic basis to keep up with the times without having to run up to Beacon Hill and change everything and get all the votes and signatures and worry about somebody else. It's going to put the operation of the city of Lynn back where it belongs, locally with the mayor and the city council, where it does belong. As a legislative body, the council should have final say on most things in this charter. The mayor obviously has a veto, that stays. But the council can always override it. The council can always choose not to accept the appointments recommended by the mayor. The council can always choose not to adopt any administrative codes presented by the mayor. It increases a lot of the responsibility and the authority of the council. So I just hope this is treated very favorably, and I want to thank everyone for their involvement in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. And I've been a socio-political activist in town for 25 years now. And for the past 15, we've been lobbying for such changes, so we're glad this finally happened. The last change, I think, was in 2010, when the big change was to just make gender neutral all the references in the blanket document. And so I just want to speak, it was a very good committee filled with experienced people. They're not just people that got 100 in every test in civics class and stuff. These guys have some experience. And I like the idea that Mr. Scanlon was talking about is we finally don't have to jump through hoops to go through the home rule process. You know, we're a mature city. We know what to do for ourselves. So it's a long time coming, and I'm glad that there's built-in mechanism for every 10-year review. And I'm glad that there was input from the city that was, from the citizens that was taken seriously. So yes, let's go on and do it. Print up the new little books.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor, seeing on that part of the public hearings close? Anybody in opposition to this that wants to speak? Come on up to the podium.
Hi, Joanne Lindner, 302 Linwood Street. I'm actually not against everything. I think a lot of the changes have been wonderful. Everything's going to be streamlined. It's going to be much easier for us to read it and understand it. With that said, though, there are a few things. We used to have a section 5-6, which was bond indebtedness, which was done away with in 2018 when we borrowed all that money from the state. Now, at that point, it was a $4 million. You had to come to the voters. Anything more than that. I agree, $4 million was a low amount. But right now, you've got a blank check. I think we should have some form of having the voters have a say. You know, we borrowed $123 million for a new school, which I agree with. But, you know, I wonder what's going to happen in 2026 or moving forward. I think we need to be cautious about that. And I'm also happy to see that there's going to be an annual audit now. In all the years I've been watching city council meetings, I don't ever recall big audits. I think we need to do that. And also, I'm a little bit disappointed that we've been talking about this for years, and there was like no presentation on it. We had presentations about trees, but something important like changing our city government, we don't get anything. I don't think that's right. And what, my last point would be, I'm a little bit confused. How will this charter be changed? Home rule petition? I noticed that there's no way for, we used to have language that said certain things had to be voted on by the voters, or it was either by the voters or by the state legislature. If it's not going to be the state legislature, it's not the voters. Who exactly is it? And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition, seeing on that part of the hearing is closed. I'm just going to open it up to the floor for the council for questions or just stuff before we get into anything else. Counsel Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually curious what the answer for some of Joanne's question, if the mayor or Attorney Lamanna could, or any members of the committee could answer some of her questions.
Does anybody, did everybody hear some of those questions? Attorney Lamanna, thank you.
So this home rule petition would require approval of this council, approval of the mayor, approval of the House, the Senate, and the governor. So this is a lawful, one of the three lawful ways to change a charter. But any one of those groups says no, the charter would not pass.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the council? No questions from the council? Comments? Counsel McLean?
Yeah, I noticed that it says the council, the city council will continue to appoint a city clerk, but would no longer appoint any other department heads. I believe that we spoke about the solicitor being included in the appointments of the council.
I believe if there's, we'll have an amendment, I think, then we could amend that, if I'm correct.
My understanding, the Collins Center put together a proposed amendment that may be proffered by one of the members if they're agreeable to the Collins Center solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel up here?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have some sort of overview, overarching comments before we get to the specifics of the changes. But I too want to thank, you know, the mayor and the committee that we had appointments to and the mayor had appointments to. I think it's really a great team effort, and I applaud these outcomes. And by saying that, I also say it with some hesitancy and reservation, because what we're doing here in terms of a review is different from what I grew up with in terms of a whole elected charter school committee, if you will. And I understand there's a process for that as well. It includes a petition. It includes a number of, percentage of signatures of Lynn residents to want to put something, put forth individuals who would run for charter commission. This is different from what has been explained to me as why we're doing this and going up to the state level in a home rule petition fashion, is it might be one of the three legal ways to change a charter. Doesn't particularly sit well with me that we did not have, to the extent possible, and I'm saying these remarks not because we had a January public hearing, not because we did hear from the public, not because there were 10 meetings in 2024. Yeoman's work were accomplished by our counselor, McLean, who was our appointment, among others, community appointments, former mayor McGee, former counselor at large Scanlon. I don't say this as a knock to any of that. What I do say it as is people had to really tune in. They had to really either come here in person, they had to find the Lynn Community Television link to get onto these meetings. And there was great discussion around, a lot of issues around the charter, and we've got it down to about a dozen or so, which is fine. But the missing element to me is citizen involvement. That means that citizens run for things. They want to be a part of a charter commission. They want to hear their voice heard. They're elected by the general public. And again, I get we're not doing this. We're not going to do it tonight, that's for sure. But this is what our charter was designed for every decade. So every 10 years, you take a look at it. You see what needs fixing. You elect your charter commissioners that run for this position, and they serve aptly, and it goes before the voters. See, this is the step that we're missing in this review. Again, not to be, I'm not dismissing the work that was done. Doesn't particularly sit well with me that we did not have, to the extent possible, and I'm saying these remarks not because we had a January public hearing, not because we did hear from the public, not because there were 10 meetings in 2024. Yeoman's work were accomplished by our counselor, McLean, who was our appointment, among others, community appointments, former Mayor McGee, former counselor at large Scanlon. I don't say this as a knock to any of that. What I do say it as is people had to really tune in. They had to really either come here in person, they had to find the Lynn Community Television link to get onto these meetings. And there was great discussion around, a lot of issues around the charter. And we've got it down to about a dozen or so, which is fine. But the missing element to me is citizen involvement. That means that citizens run for things. They want to be a part of a charter commission. They want to hear their voice heard. They're elected by the general public. And again, I get we're not doing this. We're not going to do it tonight, that's for sure. But this is what our charter was designed for every decade. So every 10 years, you take a look at it. You see what needs fixing. You elect your charter commissioners that run for this position and they serve aptly and it goes before the voters. See, this is the step that we're missing in this review. Again, not to be, I'm not dismissing the work that was done. I'm just pointing out of the three processes, I like this one the least. So I'm going to hold my nose a little bit. We're going to send this up to the State House. They're going to run this through like a hot knife through a batter. That's what they do. And I've been through home rule petitions for other communities and I've seen sovereignty taken away. And I'm not saying this is the case here, but I have seen it in other communities where they take advantage of the general public and the electorate and the residents and the voters and they just steamroll things through. And it goes up there and it gets passed probably around the Christmas holiday. We might even have this one passed in December of 2025 on Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. I don't know, because we don't know how it works up there. Well, we know how it works up there. But I would prefer that it be kept here locally, that our people were elected to serve as a charter commission and then that the most important items that they decided were actually put forth to the voting public. That would be my preference. Now, not seeing that short of that, we are here and we are going to do our best to go through these items. The other point I would like to raise that came up at the January public hearing were two factors, I think, that are very important that this council has addressed and in cooperation with the mayor's office. Number one, a public mic component. We have addressed that as a council in Subcommittee Rules Division of our Rules Subcommittee and we will be coming out with something that allows, not even allows, but gives the community an opportunity to be heard prior to our council meetings, very similar to our school committee. We don't need to put that in the charter because it's already in the works. And we heard that in January from residents who came here about the charter review and we took action on that. So I'm very proud of this council for that piece of work that's ongoing and that will be unveiled very shortly after it goes through the legal channels, proper legal channels. The second piece, I would say, is on translation and interpretation. The city has done an unbelievable job, beginning with Mayor McGee and now really fast-forwarded under Mayor Nicholson's tenure, to support interpretation and translation at various community events, but in particular in governmental affairs. And I want to say that although I don't believe it needs to be in the charter, we heard that message clearly and we have taken the necessary steps as a city over the last four to six years to address that concern. The other one little piece I'd say is, I really think that we have to stay away from, and I think the committee did a wonderful job in keeping this non-electoral. I really think a lot of this is administrative, but it's non-electoral. And then there's little snips of it that sneak in a little bit here or there, it seeps in, which maybe couldn't be helped or prevented. But I think anything that has to go before the voters should be an electoral change. And I'm glad to see that most of these changes are non-electoral. And, you know, I have been influenced over some residents who have reached out to me, in particular over a couple of, more of the controversial topics that we'll discuss tonight. But most by and large, there have not been this huge outcry of folks reaching out to me at least around the changes. So I feel happy about that. I'm pleased if people did participate and had a voice in this. And I think we've got the document in front of us to look at and adopt as we will. So I thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the city council? Counselor Madri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to put it out there that I appreciate everybody who took the time to be on the charter commission. Thank you for your time and, you know, attending those meetings. And I really appreciate that. I know this is long overdue. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. As far as the charter, can we talk about the amendments yet or no?
There hasn't been any.
So the proposed amendment for like Counselor McLean had mentioned about section 2.7(c), after the word necessary, the words which may include one attorney on the staff of the law department. I just think that that word may should be changed to shall. So it should say other personnel subject to appropriation, the city council shall employ such other personnel as it deems necessary, which shall include one attorney on the staff of the law department.
Just will we open up for a vote? What we'll do is there'll be amendments and then we'll go through the amendments.
Sorry, thank you.
All right. Is there any other just overall discussion or questions about the charter here? Okay. What's the wish of the council? Counsel Chakoudas?
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. A motion to add section 2-7(c) after the word necessary.
Counselor, we're going to have to, Jim Lamanna come up for a second. Just want to make sure we get this right in the right.
Form of the vote that I, and then it can be amendments to this document.
Sorry, I'm jumping to the amendments.
Okay. Just want to make sure we get it right and the procedures correct. That was my biggest concern here tonight because there's so many moving parts to this. So Counsel Chakoudas?
I don't think things are wrong. Voted to petition the General Court to the end that legislation be adopted previously as follows. The General Court may take, make clerical and editorial changes of form only of the bill unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before by the General Court. The mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the public objectives of this petition. An act establishing the charter for the city of Lynn be enacted by the state and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, the following shall be the charter for the city of Lynn, the proposed city charter as recommended by the city charter review committee with the amendments approved by the city of Lynn council following a public hearing on April 8, 2025, if any. Section 1 of the act shall take effect upon passage.
So that is a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
And this, we're going to have, open it up for amendments and discussion. So do we have any amendments?
Me again.
Counsel up here, do you have a question?
I have more of a procedural and maybe I'm going to need Attorney Lamanna. But based upon Counsel Chakoudas's motion and seconded by Counsel Field, would we entertain a friendly amendment to that, that is simply we take these items, line item by line item, so that we're not passing everything in a group, but, and then we amend, go through and amend each line item?
The will of the council is to go line item by line item. That can be done or can be taken in a global, a global manner if counselors have proposed amendments, as many of them have come, were authored by the Collins Center. Some that I was asked to, one in particular, I was asked to draft by Counsel Field. But there may be other amendments that.
Can I put that on as a friendly amendment to the motion? If it's acceptable?
To go line item by line?
By line item. Or does it have to be a separate motion?
You can go, it's part of the discussion. If you so choose, you can go through the 30, 34 pages, item by item, line item by line item as part of the discussion.
I want to go through this page, line item by line item, the summary.
The summary?
The one pager, plus the Collins amendments. Correct?
Jim, would we vote on that friendly amendment or will we just allow it as a group? How would we do that?
It could be part of the discussion.
Can do it separate too. Doesn't matter to me.
Or if it's the will of the council?
Yeah, if you want to do that.
It's up to the council. What do you guys want to do? Anybody? Do you want to take this one front section?
It's fine with me because my motion's going to be the next one to do that, line item by line item.
To go through all 34 pages of it?
No.
Okay.
The summary only.
The summary. Okay, I'm just trying to understand what we're.
One through 11 plus Collins amendments.
Okay.
That's my, that would be my motion.
That's, I would, fine with that. I'm just trying to make sure we get the procedure together if that's.
I just want to make sure we do it properly. You want to take their motion first and then we'll vote on my motion?
Yeah. Does it matter, Jim? I just want to make sure we get it right.
It can be a separate, a separate motion to go line item by line item on the Collins Center summary.
Okay. So we have a motion on the charter. We have a second on it and there's some amendments I think we're going to read in that I think people want to make and then we can do it afterwards, I think. Right? Does that sound right?
Is it going to be two votes or is it going to be one single?
That's what I have to have Attorney Lamanna explain.
So I envision there's going to be discussion on each one of the items. There may be a motion to amend that you'll have to refer back to the 34-page charter if you're looking to alter that language anyway. The summary is not the document that's going to be sent to Beacon, to Beacon Hill if this does pass.
Correct.
It just generally references what's in here. We require anytime that the ordinance or home rule petitions over eight pages to provide a summary and a link where the public can have the whole document. So there could be a general discussion on each one of those bullet point, but it would have to be a motion if there's a desire to amend any of those bullet points. You wouldn't be amending the summary.
Mr. President?
Counsel Alinson?
We've waited for more than a decade for this. What is 30 minutes more of our time? I will second Counsel Lepierre's.
It's fine with me. Just want to make sure we get it right in the order that we have to vote on. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have to vote on that?
Can we just, can we just add that Counsel Lepierre's amendment into our motion and just take it all at the same time? Is that an option, Attorney Lamanna? If it's going to happen anyway, it's just, might as well happen.
I'm fine with that. Just want to make sure we get procedural correct. That's what I'm trying to.
So I would recommend that Counsel Lepierre make a motion to discuss each individual bullet item in the summary.
Aside from their motion to open this thing up, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
So that's your motion?
I think you should vote on this one first.
Okay, so we have a motion, second.
You should not be voting on, because if this passes, then the charter as is with no amendments would be, would be what was approved.
Right. So we have to do Counsel Upia. So make a motion.
I would make a motion to discuss the charter review recommendations one by one, by topic. Would Counsel? And vote individually. Be required to amend her motion to approve?
I believe so, yes.
Because she initiated it.
Yes, I think you should amend it.
I make a motion to amend my amendment.
A motion to amend your motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
With Counsel Lepierre's? Motion to discuss one by one? With the stipulations to discuss.
Okay, so a motion to do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Counsel Upia?
Okay, so. Do we read in the amendments first and then, or do we give them? Yeah, with that being said, I believe we would just go item by item based on the summary and refer back with anyone, any counselor's proposed amendments, correct?
Yes.
I'm fine with that. Yep.
So the first one is number one. I would have the clerk probably read each one and then open it up for discussion.
Okay, would you read the first item on the line item?
Oh, I'm sorry. Me? I get to go? Okay. The summary of the proposed changes to the charter. Okay, number one. The current city council consisting of 11 members, four elected at large and seven elected by Ward, would continue to be elected for two-year terms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item?
The city council will continue to appoint a city clerk, but would no longer appoint any other department heads.
The wish of the council?
I have a question. Is this where we would add into that amendment or not?
These are the amendments, yep.
Okay.
And I.
Should approve with the amendment?
Motion to approve.
Give a motion to approve?
With the amendment.
The second, the amendment. All in favor?
We have to read the amendment first.
Okay, read the amendment. So I'm trying, this is what I was trying to avoid.
The amendment as it relates to department head appointments, this would be appropriate time to do that, to the extent, whatever the will of the council is.
All right. Motion to add section 2-7(c) after the word necessary, the words which may include one attorney on the staff of the law department, page 7, line 14 and 15.
Okay. Counselor. That's a motion to amend. Counsel McLean?
I just have a question. I know that I was on the charter committee, but I would like it to be said aloud what the checks and balances are for these department head appointments that the mayor will be making solely. Because I know we did discuss during the charter commission, charter meetings and some HR protocols being put in place by the mayor. Can someone just make sure that's said out loud?
Attorney Lamanna?
That is in the proposed 34-page charter that is part of the reorganization plan. The mayor will put together a progressive discipline that would govern possible termination of department heads.
All right, so let's.
Can I? Sorry, I'm sorry. I wanted to change. So with the amendment that Counsel Chakoudas read, I want to strike the word may both times and change it to shall. So it should say the city council shall.
Friendly amendment. Counsel Chakoudas, is that okay?
Versus may.
All right, so I meant to add shall instead of may.
Okay, that's good.
To the amendment for section 2.7(c).
Right.
Yes.
Did you discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's for the amendment. Let's vote on, that was the overall amendment that was amended. Just a lot of amendments here. Good.
2.7(c), there's been a motion to amend 2.7(c).
Right. Do we vote on 2.7(c) with the amendment or?
You should do that with a roll call right now.
Roll call. Okay. Roll call. It's on the actual change with the friendly amendment.
This is on the proposed amendment, number one?
Correct.
Two. Number two, we already passed one.
I'm sorry, number, number one?
Two, one, the public hearing.
Number two? Okay, Counsel Alinson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes, with the amendments.
Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lepierre?
No.
Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Meany absent. Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Kate Panses?
Motion passes. Next item, line item.
The city council would retain the powers of municipal legislative bodies in Massachusetts. The mayor's authority over appointments of department heads would be strengthened.
It's the wish of the council? Counsel Upia?
I would just offer an amendment. I heard a lot about HR, human resources practices and progressive discipline, but I did not hear the term just cause. I would like to make a motion to add just cause to this provision.
Okay, we have a motion to add just cause.
We're going to need to cite the provision of the charter because this summary is not a document that's going to be seen by the legislature.
Counsel Hogan's helping me right here.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Counsel Alinson?
Mind my ignorance, what's the, what is it got to do when you put just cause to the whole sentence?
Counsel Upia, can you explain?
Just cause, Counselor, is a higher standard around the intent to dismiss. It's, it's better than simply saying, you know, there'll be HR practices or there'll be progressive discipline. It really spells out that a department head would have to be egregious to be removed from their position. And I think we owe that to prospective department heads where there would just be a higher standard to try and remove someone. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Attorney Lamanna, I just want to, so that is in that provision that he's adding? Is that appropriate? I just want to get this right again.
I'm trying to locate this provision. My recollection was that the progressive discipline would be removed by following the law and just cause would certainly be the law. So I think it's incorporated in that language and I've heard it, Goldrick, that the just cause is in the language of the charter. Maybe not be worded, but by law.
Can you come on up? I want to make sure everybody hears this, so we know. Thank you, sorry. The gentleman from the Collins Center.
If I recall, Jim, the progressive discipline provision is in the transition. So, the mayor, right, it's in the back of the document.
The transition segment?
Yeah.
That's right.
That's right. Natasha.
You got it, Natasha?
Yes.
Huh? Oh, in the very back.
I think you should start brewing coffee, Terry.
Yes. "Within 180 days from the enactment of this charter, the mayor shall promulgate a progressive disciplinary policy for department heads and the employees of the city not subject to collective bargaining agreement." So, does somebody want to amend that subsection E?
I might want to point to subsection 10D that says, "but is subject to removal in accordance with applicable laws, rules, regulations, and policies." I would interpret that as "just cause" would be removal of applicable laws.
I would agree with that.
That that will be the standard?
If you would like to add "for just cause" at the end of that sentence.
Yeah, I would like to, on that, so I guess on my motion, I would like to add the term "just cause" to that provision.
10-6D.
10-6D, thank you.
It could be a separate text. All removals will be subject to "just cause."
Fine, I would accept that, all...
It's already in there then, so we're okay?
I would, well, we would codify it by adding the term "just cause" to a new provision. Looks like, is it 10-6D? Any removal would be subject to "just cause."
Yeah, I mean, I...
That's what the will of the...
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem with that. That's your labor side coming out, Counsel Lapierre, so I get that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Put it out there.
So, we have an amendment, so it's a motion to amend, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it, on the amendment?
Strengthens it beyond state law, that's all I'm saying.
Yep. Roll call?
Counselor Allenson?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes, passes. Next line item.
We have number four. Department heads would no longer serve for indefinite terms.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second, any discussion on it? Roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes, carries. Next item, line item.
And number five. The mayor would continue to serve a four-year term. The school committee would remain a seven-member body elected at large. The mayor would continue to serve as the chair. Vacancies would be filled by the remaining members of the school committee by selecting the defeated candidate who received at least 20% of the ballots cast for that office. If there is no defeated candidate, the seat would be filled by a joint convention of the city council and the school committee.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, second. Any discussion on it? Roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Next line item.
Number six. The mayor would continue to be authorized to submit reorganization plans of departments and boards and commissions to the city council. The city council could approve or reject the mayor's proposals but would not have the authority to amend them.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Next item, number seven.
Number seven. The city would no longer be required to seek state approval for the reorganization of the city government.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Next item.
Number eight. The mayor would be required to call a joint meeting of the city council and the school committee to review the fiscal condition of the city before the start of each year's budget process.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Item nine.
Item nine. Dates and times of elections will remain the same. The inaugural date will be changed to the first business day in January to avoid conflict with a holiday.
Motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Number 10.
Number 10. The mayor and the members of the city council or school committee would not be allowed to hold any other paid position with the city until one year after their service ends, rather than the current two-year wait period.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a second, discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. I think we missed number one, if I'm correct on this list. So, could the clerk read number one, please?
Number 11. We got number 11.
Back to number one?
Yep.
We did, we did that.
We did it. Did we do number one?
Yes, we did. We're at number 11 now. Yep, we're on 11.
Oh, it wasn't a roll call, Mr. President, it was an eye vote.
That's what I thought, I think. So, let's do that again, one more time with a roll call, is that okay? Yep. Could we read number one, please?
Uh, yes, Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. All right.
Number 11.
Number 11.
Number 11, thank you.
And number 11. The city would continue to be required to review its charter every 10 years and codify its ordinances every five years.
It's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes. Counsel Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the following motions also to vote on. I have four, if we can vote on all four individually.
We should take them individually.
Please.
Yep.
Okay, first, is a motion to strike section 3, sorry, motion to strike section 7-3A as appearing on page 18, lines 32 to 38, as proposed in its entirety and replace the same with the following language, which appears in the current Lynn City Charter. A, signature's requirement. The number of signatures of vote is required to place the name of candidate on the official ballot to be used at a primary, preliminary election shall be as follows. For the office of mayor, not less than 500 such signatures, not more than 150 of each, which shall be from any one ward. For the office of counselor-at-large or school committee member, not less than 350 such signatures, not more than 100 of which shall be from any one ward. For the office of ward counselor, not less than 100 signatures from the ward. Thank you.
So, that's a motion to amend. We have a second, any discussion on that? Roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
I have a motion to add to section 10-1, after the word "all," the words "special acts of the general court" on page 30, line 15.
So, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on it? Roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Mini absent, Counsel Mejimandre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
I have a motion to add the following new section 10-6C, page 33, line 40 to 44. The administrative code may retain, modify, repeal, or replace any provisions of the following special acts relating to the organizations of city government. Chapter 92 of the Acts of 1931 relating to the Board of Election Commissioners. Chapter 655 of the Acts of 1956 relating to the off-street parking. Chapter 564 of the Acts of 1972 relating to salary increases. Chapter 8 of the Acts of 1985 relating to the overlay deficit. Chapter 59 of the Acts of 1989 relating to public works. Chapter 253 of the Acts of 1986 relating to the appointment of health inspectors. Chapter 465 of the Acts of 1991 relating to the appointment of the dog officer. Chapter 167 of the Acts of 1999 relating to the traffic commission. Chapter 19 of the Acts of 2002 relating to nomination papers. Chapter 223 of the Acts of 2014 relating to salaries. Chapter 378 of the Acts of 2014 relating to inspectional services. Chapter 57 of the Act of 2018 relating of the financial condition of the city. And chapter 208 of the Acts of 2024 relating to capital projects.
So, it's a motion, second. Lapierre?
Just a point of information, I believe Counsel Field, you may have missed chapter 223 of the Acts of 2002 relating to certain charter amendments.
Please, if I missed, I'd add that in.
It's the wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Minnie Absinthe?
Yes.
Counsel Mejime Madre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes, next item.
Number ten, the mayor would be required to call a joint meeting of the city council and the school committee to review the fiscal condition of the city before the start of each year's budget process.
It's the wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion, roll call?
Counsel Allenson?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Minnie Absinthe?
Yes.
Counsel Mejime Madre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes, next item.